Auburn City Council meeting for Thursday, May eleventh, two thousand seventeen.
I so moved.
City Hall.
I moved.
Motion made, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any bill changes? I'm sorry. Nope.
Nothing to change?
No.
Okay, so we'll make the motion for approved council agenda.
I so moved.
Bill second?
Second.
Chair second, all those in favor?
Aye.
You have some carries? Public, um, things from the county department, you're up.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, Deputy Tindall, in the County Sheriff's Office. Acquired hours for the month of forty-three and April was within eighty-three point eight. Approximately sixteen calls. Apparently it's lower than usual.
Well, the sheets usually fall, I mean, that's why I was...
That's good.
It's good, I guess.
Yeah, I guess it's good. Um, nothing out of the ordinary again, I don't know what the just, uh, numbers there, I don't know what those were referencing other than activity there. Kind of all through the date, time-wise anyways. Questions, any concerns, anything ongoing?
The crazies are out tonight, just started telling you.
I think most of them are from Central City, so. Just came from there.
Alright, thank you, have a good night. First one.
We had five calls in April, three medical in the city, uh, gas leak in the township, and mutually fired in Central City.
The gas meaning liquid gas like for a vehicle?
No, like, uh, gas.
Okay, there you go.
I do have something, Steve, I want to bring it up, I just wanted, I was coming in town today. The call that was on Third Street. Medical call, they go drill bit in their leg or something that night. One of the firemen come in, and he come in so fast, the fireman, he slammed into the telephone pole.
From a fire station?
The wires just went. They come running out of the, they come running out of the lawnmower place to check it out, wonder what happened, you know? But, yeah, I don't know if they do that often, or, you know?
They're tall, not the speed, but...
But then, and then when he got in the truck, he took out, I mean, he hammered it. You know, from there to the corner, before he turned, it was, it was hard at the time. That's like, I thought it was a little excessive, but, you know? I do have a picture of the vehicle, I could show you.
That'd be helpful.
Maybe you could say something, you know, just kind of...
Well, you don't want anyone there.
We don't need anybody getting hurt.
Oh, I know, I've dealt with several first people in town and stuff like that.
I just happened to be there at the stop sign when they're coming through and they were coming.
As far as your partner, apparently the lawnmower guys has all their carts right there.
Yeah, yeah, they didn't. So, anyway, that's all I have.
I guess I've got a question, how are you covering our test in the fire hose?
We haven't had a chance to test it yet. We gotta borrow the stuff from, when you're up? Haven't been able to do nothing for a month now, so it's gonna be a while before we get to it.
So then what are we gonna, we gonna do with, uh, we're gonna move one hose from one drop to another one?
I haven't even ordered it yet.
Like I say, let's, let's check to see what we really need.
That's kind of what I'm doing, but I wanted...
Okay, I understand.
So if it happens, we need to get hoses.
Right, well, if it's bad, it's bad. Thank you.
Any questions, Steve? I think not, Matt, you're up, buddy.
I, I really should have a, uh, kind of similar project update here, uh, kind of summarizing what's happened the last month with our project. Water mains is essentially in now, it's, we submit the connection to third and then we're done, but it is, the new main is live, it's been tested and pressure tested and factory tested. All but one house now should be connected on to the new main. We'll put the last one probably getting done tomorrow, so we should get everyone transferred over to the new main by, by end of the week, so. After that, sounds like the next thing we're gonna be moving on to is a storm sewer, um, storm sewer and drain tiles, so, and that should take them, probably towards the end of the month, I guess, and then they're, start feeling back pavement, so. Moving along pretty quick, so, with the rain event, so. Assuming it's on here later, but we do have change order this month. Just kind of summarizing here too, uh, change order number one, there's, really incorporates three different, three different items. First item is sanitary sewer laterals repairs, so as they're putting the water main in, they hit three, sort of, three laterals that go to the house, right along to go to the house. They're real shallow, and also some of them didn't have basements and, um, we weren't expecting to hit them because they're deeper than the water main, so. So that, that cost is three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for three. It also includes imported backfill. So about a third of the way down the street, I mean, you're halfway, we, we started hitting soils that were bush and jello, wet and sandy, so. They, the concern is that you can't really put it back in there and compact it well enough that, I don't know, we, um, we don't want it sinking obviously, uh, settling in the future, so. We got, we got a number from them for about, for twenty, ten dollars fifty cents per ton to remove that soil, take it off site.
Sorry, I don't know how to do this.
Take it off, right? Take it off site and then bring in limestone screen, which is basically just a line, kind of same material, which compacts your height. So that, that's a kind of a running total, so that, that, there's gonna be more, uh, why not a week's worth of water main to put in after this number, so. So that was, I don't know how many tons that is, but, uh, anything? It's about six hundred and seventy-eight tons, so. And the last item was an actually a deduct of five thousand, uh, fifty-three ninety-six, and that was for the wa, the hydrants that the city purchased, uh, directly purchased. And it's a deduct of the prod, of the, of the project, so we don't essentially pay for it, so. So the, the net change order is five thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Cause I think, I'll get to that later in the chat, I assume.
Right, with you.
Okay, with me, okay. I goes, is there any questions on the change order first, before we?
Do I do that after you talk to him? When he gets done, we'll go through it.
Okay, okay, yeah, and then the other item was, uh, pay application number two, uh, for sixty thousand, seventy-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. That included mainly water main work, um, a little bit of clearing and grubbing, which take out trees essentially. Uh, tree stump, um, water services, valves, uh, removing of some existing, existing pavement, uh, some rock, aggregate for the driveways, temporary driveways. Some trap control, erosion control. Uh, and then it also includes that change order on here, so. So that's, that's all I have for you. Is any questions on the project so far, or?
Just one little side note that goes along with this, when you talk about tree and, and grubbing and tree removal, we are gonna see another bill from Joel Prey, uh, tree service, because as they were moving down the project, it became evident that we didn't remove enough, we didn't do enough tree trimming. And John and I did all we could, but some of it was too far up in the air, so Joel was nice enough to come and, and trim trees that needed to be trimmed, to stay out of the way of the excavator, so. Have no idea what that bill's gonna be, I didn't force him to put a number on it right on the spot, cause he was willing, he came the day after I called him, in order to keep the project going, but we know he's reasonable, it won't amount to much, but it will be coming, and that will not be part of, of the project cost, so, there'll be, who knows, I, I, I don't even want to put a number on it. And then two homeowners agreed to, while he was there, taking down two trees that were, both of them were not in great shape anyway. And by the time he would have got done trimming them, um, they would have been probably on their way to dead, and so they agreed to pay him what I felt was a really good price to, on their own, to take them down, have Joel take them down, so, um, they were completely out of the way of the project at that point, so, it, it worked out pretty good, I think, so.
Anything else for you? So, we'll go ahead and, let's go ahead and obtain the motion for a change order number one, for five thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents.
I so moved.
Motion's been made, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Chair second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll go ahead and make the motion for a pay application number two, for sixty thousand, oh, seventy, seventy-seven dollars and twenty-one cents.
I'll motion.
Motion by Woods, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Chair second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Anybody wishing to speak?
I'm asking about that tree of Pat Watchell's up there, where you dug around it, and it's such a tall tree, that after you get done, this tree's not gonna live long. And I'm thinking that you've already taken out trees on that street for other people, you can go ahead and take that one out for it. And I think that'd be appropriate, such a big tree, it's not gonna live.
I don't know everybody, would you say your name and address for the, would you name an address?
Jim Hill.
Oh, Hill, okay, yeah, okay.
And one forty-seven Muthard.
Yeah, okay, I thought so, but I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, but, uh, uh, this is really gonna be a problem, such a large tree. Uh, two-thirds of the roots are gonna be, have to be gone, from all the digging that's gone around there now. They dug in for the fire plug, they came across in front of it, dug down for the water line, and then they dug down again for the water line to go into the house. Now, this has gotten two-thirds of the roots on that tree, and so, uh, to me, this is just a matter of time before that thing's gonna...
This is a tree on your property, Mr. Hill?
What is it?
Is it a tree on your property?
No.
Which tree is it?
It's on Pat Watchell's property, the next, next house to the west from...
Oh, just to the west of your house?
Yep.
Okay.
It's up there where the fire plug is, where the new...
Mid block.
Old fire, fire plug, it's in the two-hundred block.
Okay. There's no part of the main mass of the tree that's in, in our project, it's just the roots underneath the ground, uh, along with several other trees in the path, but yes, we're pruning roots, without a doubt, it's inevitable. And I, and I would say Jim's probably right, that particular tree got more roots pruned than some of the others because of the other direction of, of cut, but it's, you know...
It's such a large tree.
I understand that, I understand that.
And, hold on, hold on a second, go ahead, finish your statement.
It's, it's just, it's on her property, and it is, it was not, no, no part of the above-ground mass of the, of the tree was in, in our, uh, you know, in our right-of-way. And that's why, that would fall under the same category as the two folks that decided to take their tree down and pay Joel to pay it. If she is afraid it's gonna die and she wants to pay to have it taken down, that's absolutely her, her choice to do, um, you know? The only trees that we took down were in the path of our, totally in the path of our project, at least had part of the above-ground mass in direct path of our project, so, that's the difference, understand what Jim's saying, I mean, yes, there is a good chance it could die, but...
Well, I swear, uh, to the people that raise trees and, and know about trees, they say that, uh, uh, this thing, two years best. It just doesn't have the root system left to feed that tree. And the options are to go in there and top that baby out, cut it down to size where what roots are left. And then what kind of a tree would you have, that looks to me like that tree is, uh, fifty to seventy years old, I would say? And, uh, you know, take the thing down, get it out of there.
It's the homeowner's thing.
It's a homeowner's tree.
She's not saying anything to me.
Nothing we can do about it.
Nothing.
Yeah, but it's more up to her to...
Yeah.
Private interest.
But, this was, you know, I, I talked with her and, and I showed her what was going on, when this was going on, and, and she's, you know, from there, it's really none of my business, I'm just saying that, you know, I...
Yeah, thanks for bringing it up.
I'm, I'm thinking this thing is, is, if it goes down, uh, it's going clear to the alley, I mean, it's going clear through the house and into the backyard, it's such a huge tree.
Alright, we'll take that in consideration, but like I say, it's not in our property, social and active, probably do something with it or something, so, we're gonna move on, uh, with the five minutes is up, so. Okay, new business, save your maintenance report.
Okay, uh, pretty short and sweet, uh, I've been very busy, obviously, watching everything going on on Muthard Street, and I think the crew is doing a great job. And, as far as the waterworks go, we have not been having any trouble, everything is working appropriately. I have mentioned that, uh, where I was having trouble getting a good chlorine test at the elevator after that new fire plug was installed, and I have, uh, been flushing a lot, and between that and the co-op loading several sprayers here in the last month, I'm getting much better chlorine tests there, so, that's encouraging, I just hope it continues after sprayer season's over, um, and see how that, that goes.
They're loading sprayers that they elevate?
They, it's kind of, it's kind of just a passing deal when they've got sprayers in this area, well, probably not sprayers, tender trucks.
Okay, they must be carrying the product on their truck then?
Yeah, they don't, they don't have the...
Hasn't seen, or maybe they're hot loads?
Yeah, no, they're, I think that what they're doing is they're just pulling through if they're in this area and grabbing water and mixing out on the field, for whatever reason.
Okay.
Kirk was thinking...
Makes sense.
Yeah, Tuesday, when I took the water sample there, Kirk was thinking they probably pumped twenty thousand gallons over the past couple of weeks, so we'll know, cause that, that sprayer port is metered separately, it has a big meter on it, so it's metered separately, we'll know how much they use when it comes next bill cycle. But, uh, in the meantime, it's good to flow that much water, cause I've turned, I've got the chlorine turned up as high as I dare because of the Muthard project, and having some lower tests than I wanted in Dead End, so that good chlorinated water is, is, uh, um, is a good thing to be running through those pipes if we did have nitrification going on, which is what I suspect we had going on, so. As Matt mentioned, the bacteria test, I took the bacteria test for the new main and took it to our lab, and it passed no, no bacteria, coliforms or, or E. coli at all. Monitored the pressure test, that went well too, after they had a, they had a little leak, when they put the main in the ground, they had one, uh, corp that they didn't have shut all the way, and they're, they should have all bought lottery tickets, cause it was the first one they dug up. Yeah, cause they were gonna have to dig up all seventeen until they found it, because it was evident there was a, a leak somewhere on a brand-new main, and it almost had to be one of those, so, it was the first one they dug, thank goodness, um, for them, I should say. But the water system's all doing good, I'm still investigating more on the possible water upgrade to control it remotely. The price was astronomical to have our own network to control that thing, so I'm investigating whether we can just, um, do it through being able to pull that data off of a regular internet connection and collect it and do something with it on our own versus putting radios in, one of the two should work, and, and we've got time, we'll figure that out. Uh, as far as the sewer system goes, um, I've been drawing down, it's the spring drawdown period, I'll probably shut it off tomorrow, we're down to, I'm guessing when I go out there and measure in the morning, we'll be at as low as we can go, um, and that all went well, our test was a little high, higher than what we normally see, uh, for pre-draw, but that's because we waited so long to bring number one contents down to number three, because we were waiting for Ratchies to get here to replace the valves, if you remember, but they were still within our limits, so, it's not a problem, just was higher than we normally have.
Could infiltration cause that to be, the less infiltration cause that to be higher?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it could be.
I mean, our infiltration is bound considerably, and that might start, our test might start coming back a little.
Yeah, but the, the, the numbers on two that got filled immediately were as good or better than we've ever seen them, so I think it mostly had to do with it just didn't, wasn't in cell three as long as we normally have it.
Yeah, it's true.
So, um, and still, just wanted you to keep in mind, we need to probably line a little bit and, and do some manholes when we get to next year's budget, and just keep after that infiltration problem, so we can keep it up. The mowing has been a struggle, thank you, Councilman Minson, for jumping on the mower and doing some, John has been great when the weather has kept him out of the field of coming in and jumping on the mower. So it's been a three-man job, and we're barely staying ahead, though we are, I think, staying ahead. The string trimmer hasn't been overworked, but we'll, we'll get that going too eventually here. And the mower has been running fine this year, we had all that trouble last year with it dying on us, and it's been working, no problem. Still looking at options on fixing the pole shed, um, I ju, I just saw on TV, I don't know if any of you others saw it, they did a little story on Maiden Eastern Iowa, and there's a company in Cedar Rapids called Triton that makes a rubberized roof coating, have no idea if it's more or less expensive than the outfit out of Benton, have no idea. But I thought, well, I'll give them a call too, and see if that's an option for our roof. If it, if they can do it without going up there and replacing all those screws, cause that's what the company out of Benton wanted to do was, was put a screw over every nail in that roof before they put their product on it, and this, this story on Triton and what I saw on the internet, kind of tells me that maybe that would not be the case with them, so, we'll find out if it's viable or not. So, continuing to think about that is what I'm saying. Um, have used the new trailer a couple times, that's a good move, um, made probably half the work in filling, um, some big potholes down by, um, Dan McBurne's apartments. I had a, a barrel of cold patch that Leland Osmondson gave me because he did a project and had too much, and just loaded barrel and skid loader and all up on the trailer, drove up there, dumped it out, spread it out, loaded it back up, took it back, otherwise that would have been a free tripper. Would have killed a couple more hours to get that job done, so, um, good purchase there. The fiber crew is nearly done, they are kind of cleaning up, if you guys know or, or have seen or noticed that you've got neighbors or anybody where you think they could possibly use a fiber connection that isn't, don't have the box and doesn't look like they've had a line run to them, let me know or let the telephone company know, cause they gotta come back and clean all those up later, and it's a giant, enormous pain, not only for them, but for everybody who has to locate and all other entities involved in this. For example, the company that put the boxes on did not let anyone know that we had put a box on our little lift station, and we wanted fiber there, and so it's been unhooked, and I drove by the other day and I didn't see any activity in the dirt, so I checked with the foreman, he's like, yep, I just saw it the other day, there was absolutely nothing on my work orders for that thing, but we'll get, if you know of anything else, please let me know, cause they are at the point now where they're kind of tidying up, they're probably gonna hook up the wellhouse tomorrow. The other lift station is done, it's, it's been connected and the shop has been connected as far as city structures go, but they are nearing the end, and if anybody asks you, they are seeding, and many of you have seen, they've already fixed where they tore up the, around your house, uh, as far as leveling it and putting dirt back in, they are gonna seed it. I've been getting that question a lot, but they, they are gonna take care of all that and fix it, and if you have anything abnormal in your property, or your neighbors ask you about it, just tell them to get in touch with telephone company, they will get in touch with A and A. So, um, that's nearing the end, which is kind of nice, the phone call request will slow up just a smidge, that'd be good with me? Um, I got six bags of pothole patch left, so I'm kind of rationing, if, I know there's some holes need to be filled, but if we're gonna mill an overlay, I don't wanna dump any more than we have to out there, so I'm kind of saving those six bags in case something erupts big, um, so that means we've stuck fifty bags in that, mostly about ninety percent of them in Main Street, so that'll be nice.
Needs a little bit of work.
Yeah, it, it, that tells us where we're at with that street. Next week, I'm planning on taking out the bushes on, where Muthard turns to Willow, um, just west of, of Third Avenue, we've talked with both homeowners. Um, I'm gonna try and be helpful as far as taking out some bushes that they wanna save, and taking them out with the, I'll rent Mini's Marty, or Marty's Mini's Marty, Marty's Mini, and try and dip them out so that they can be replanted for them, um, and otherwise we'll, uh, get that area cleared out, cause a lot of that, those bushes are right in the way of where the sidewalk will be when, when that part of the project's done, so that's coming up, I hope to get that done next week. Street signs, um, we've had a request from the gentleman building a new house up in Naylor's Edition to get street signs up, his delivery trucks are getting confused. It's not been on my front burner with one house out there, but, um, probably should be put up, um, and I have those signs, and that's, that's not part of the, what I'm gonna talk about here, but the Lions Club did mention that a lot of our street signs are getting very hard to read, they're getting very faded and worn. Obviously, the Lions were involved the last time, cause they all have Lions logo on them, and some of the Lions members have, have indicated that they might be willing to, uh, purchase signs. Some others have said, no, the city's got plenty of money, the city should put up new signs on their own, do you guys have an opinion on that situation, not to be voted on today, but, um...
Name by number.
What's that?
I talked to Sharon about this one last night, in the morning, Tuesday morning. I will check with my boss to see if we can purchase signs through them, see if I can get a price, if not, I'll just go straight to prison industries.
Well, we've got another company that we didn't know sold them, is sending us a quote here shortly, don't know, his initial number says it's lower than I P I, but, I don't know.
But, the quality of sign is not there.
I don't know.
That's what we've run into.
Okay, okay.
There, there are some...
Muthard.
Oh, yeah.
There are some...
There are some bad.
You can't read.
Anything facing south is...
We should probably do.
And there are some areas too, and, and I think Sharon noticed near where she lives that they put street signs on top of stop sign poles, which is not a bad idea, um, I mean, we've got good poles that the signs could go right back up on, we've got other poles that probably ought to be replaced. I've got one that somebody clobbered last winter, cause they slid through the intersection and, and hit it, you know, so something has, new has to be down there, but, um, anybody have an opinion on that too, as far as, um, on its own pole versus on top of a, I mean, if I go put it on a stop sign, I'm gonna have to lower the stop sign down a couple inches on the pole and then put the bracket on top of that.
Are your stop signs the ones that have the, all the holes in it?
Tows more.
Is that what it's called?
Tows more.
Yeah, the, the hole every two inches or whatever, yeah.
Is it, they're square?
Yeah.
So it's not like you can, um, you can't put like an extension on them?
Oh, could, cause they make like four different sizes of, you know...
What I'm saying is, instead of having to lower the signs and all that other stuff, wouldn't it be easier just to raise it up however far you need to raise it?
Oh, yeah, you could put a stub on top.
Stub.
So I kind of want to add a little bit too, that I just found this out last night, cause my coworker and I were talking about signs for Auburnet, and he said something about the sign laws are gonna change. They have to go to, and I think he said six-inch blade because of our ever-increasing population that is aging, that's how he worded it, actually.
I can't read them.
So I wonder if we need to look into that, do, get the six-inch blades instead of...
So it sounds like more research is to be done before we go any further with this.
Instead, we can...
Is that true, Dave? Are they hard to read? Do we even have street signs?
Well, what is wrong with your street anyway? First Avenue's south on one, and you go four houses down here, West First Avenue.
That was done by, that was done by Mr. Al Barnet.
It's four houses and it's got two different.
So I'll look, I'll look into that a little bit more. And then we'll verify if the Lions Club wants to spend their money on that or not. We'll, we'll pin them down next meeting.
And we'll go fifty fifty.
I mean, go, yeah, we can help with it.
Fifty fifty.
How many signs did you come up with?
Twenty-seven or twenty-nine.
Twenty-seven at, at a roughly thirty bucks a blade, so.
Is that just street blades or?
It's not a lot of them.
Stop signs.
Those are just street blades.
Just blades.
We just replaced all our stop signs. Wasn't that long ago. We did that rant.
I'll just, I'll, I'll get more research on it and get a better numbers for next meeting, no problem. Then beyond that, I can't think of anything else. I did my council report at about four forty-five tonight because things have been a little bit busy. So anybody have any questions for me or seen anything going on they wanna know about?
When we do this overlay too, if, when, if we do it, what about Roosevelt? When that, if you're going out of town there and starting to get, I think we oughta look at doing that at the same time.
Yeah, we could either have them do it or that's probably something, see, that, that one's tricky because.
That's getting started to get pretty bad.
It is, but that, that area that's busting up so bad is just chipping, chip seal. It's not asphalt. It, it's just chip seal. So it's only about this thing. So that's part of the reason that it's busting up, because it got soft underneath there. And I mean, we could, we could definitely either have Kleesner look at it or I could, you know, when I got Marty's Mini in town, we could actually dig it out a foot deep and see if he'll bring his roller in and then go get, you know, hot nicks and dump it in there and, and roll it in and make a, you know, an eight-foot wide by fifteen-foot long patch in there and make it deep asphalt, you know, and try and hold it together. But yeah, that road is just ass, or just chip seal out there.
We don't need another car to hit it.
Maybe, yeah.
Put the front end.
Oh, I put ten bags of pothole patch in that every year that I've worked here so far, so.
What if we just saw about, what did we take to, what did they normally put down? Four or six? Four?
On new, over that or whatever?
I mean, we're gonna sit here and we'll spend this amount of time and this money and then here we are again, we're fixing it a year later or two years later or whatever.
Maybe you could do a full width patch for twenty feet there off the end of the concrete.
I mean, just find out. Just find out what the cost is. I'm assuming we're gonna do it, but we've been band-aiding it for how long?
Yep.
Ever since I can remember.
Yep.
It's been a long time.
Just wanna make it, plus that's hardened equipment.
Yep.
Snowing.
Yep. No problem. I'll, I'll find out what we can do there. No problem. I'm done, unless you have any more questions.
Anything else from that? Okay, now let's go ahead and, uh, go ahead and have a resolution for approving the, how you pronounce that?
Oh, I don't even know who it is.
Chopper. Were Chopper bought? Are they, they bind it off or?
Yeah, somewhere out, it's forty-one sixty-one Sutton Road, so it's.
Hot east of town.
Well, east and go north.
North.
It must be two miles.
They're within our two mile district.
I make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion been made, been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's go to resolution two.
That's in the county.
In the county, but it's our two miles, so our comprehensive plan, somebody would plant an airport out there, they're not in our way.
Let's look at resolution oh five dash two oh one seven dash two transfers of monies for a street, street project of a hundred thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution oh five twenty seventeen days two.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution oh five dash two oh one seven dash three transfers of money to street project. Local option sales tax transfer out of fifty thousand. You have a motion?
I still move.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Would second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution oh five dash two oh one seven dash four transfers of money to street project for fifty thousand dollars in road use tax.
I still move.
Would motion move second?
Second.
Turn it second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution oh five two dash two oh one seven dash six transfer of money to account three oh three. If I have that one.
I job grant.
Well, it was, it's one of those we've carried. We had an eighteen hundred minus in one and a fifteen hundred plus in I jobs and it was, and I think it was back in twenty-ten or something, we didn't get them straightened out. So John I was here yesterday, we put the fifteen hundred in there, we straightened it out, so now we've got both of those accounts at zero.
Okay, all right. So make a motion.
I still move.
Woods made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Chester second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And what's this next one, the same thing?
Well, see, there's an eighteen hundred deficit and a fifteen hundred plus. We gotta take two hundred and fifty-nine dollars from the sewer. If it had to do with that sewer. I got all the paperwork here that went through. It just zeros them back out.
Zeros them back out, okay. So a res- need a motion for resolution oh five dash two oh one seven dash seven transfers of money to three, count three oh three.
So move.
Chester made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ryan second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then resolution oh five dash two oh one seven dash eight transfers of money to general fund. How much is that?
It's the emergency fund. We levy for that each year and it comes to five thousand six hundred and seventy. But when it comes in from the county, we have to put it in the emergency fund, but you can't spend it out of there. You have to transfer it to the general and you can spend it out of the general.
Okay, so need a res- motion for that resolution?
I still move.
Ryan move, move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Charlie second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we're going on to the next one, acknowledgment of the first violation of agreement.
Uh, Mike wrote a check for three hundred dollars. It's been deposited, so I just might not have.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept that.
What was this for?
Um, they sold tobacco products from there.
Was that like a county stain?
Yep.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to accept the three hundred dollars.
Chester made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Being seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Who left these alcohol permit?
I got the notification from the alcohol beverage division. They've gotten a gram shop insurance proof of everything they filled out the paperwork and now they just need it from us.
Do we have a motion for that?
I'll move, I'll move.
Chester made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ryan seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Placement of memorial benches?
The Diamond Club has purchased a bench for memory of Scott Blackford. It's that rubberized one, like the one out of this complex for Troy Gallagher. And they were wondering if it would be possible to place it out in front of the post office.
What's the post office say about it?
They have it like you do.
I, it's on, our sidewalk is the only thing. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
I think it would be.
Gonna be in the way for stormy move, right then?
They hired their.
No, they hired him. They got heads shoveled by hand.
Yeah, shoveled by hand.
Isn't there a lot of those memorial in town? There used to be.
I don't know. I'll check on that.
I like Scott Blackford, don't laugh, but we're gonna draw the line. I think this guy passes on, we can let him put one under.
No, that won't happen.
Steve, what were you just saying? There used to be ordinance about.
Or, you know, I don't know if anyone does or not.
I'm a progress.
Yeah, we need a little.
I think we should take them and look, make sure we aren't gonna violate one of our own ordinances. It would be a wise decision.
We'll check into that.
Employee reviews?
Yes, um, I have those, all those collected from those that put the comments in, and accumulated score. I'm off all next week for various reasons and I thought I'd probably just come up Monday or something and go over those, if that's all right. There, there's, they're applying. I mean, there's no issue or whatever whatsoever, so just accumulated score. There is one thing I'd like to talk to and that's related to those that I would like the council to consider. If, if you just pass these down. Those, um, those are normally, what has come up each year, has been associated with those reviews has been whether or not employees receive their raises, they're associated with that. And something that was brought up last year and then revisited this year, I talked to Steve about it, I know he's not here, but was whether or not the council's gonna continue to give no raise, some raise, or whether or not it's gonna continue to come up each year. And employees, of course, if you continue to give raises year after year after year, of course, there'd be no end to what an employee, what the city can make. You know, I mean, they would just continue to get those depending on what you did for a raise. This particular chart is just an Excel spreadsheet and if you look at the grade one step one there, if you take Iowa's minimum wage and you extrapolate it out to an annual wage, that's what grade one step one is. And then the formula just takes a two and a half percent all the way across to step twelve. And then if you go down from grade one to grade twenty, those, that's a ten percent increase across the board. That's usually a standard pay chart on how they work. Some of them vary back and forth between four and, and six percent, but usually this is how they work. So that's what the top chart is. That's a standard pay chart for employees. Now, do we have to use pay charts? We don't, but one of the advantages of page, pay charts are you always, the employee as well as the city always knows how much they're gonna make. They know what they're gonna cap at. And if an employee leaves and you're gonna have to hire a new employee, you know exactly what that pay range salary is. There's no debate as to what they come in as. Now, you could start up higher in the range, but generally employee starts at step one unless there's a reason that you'd start them on a higher wage. So it kind of takes the guesswork out of what the pay, uh, pay ranges are. So you could, the council at their pleasure could go ahead and attach a pay grade and step to employees and be done with this. So they would either, it would be attached to their reviews and they would continue to get step increases until they hit step twelve and then that's it. That, that's as much as they would make unless you did a cost of living or something like that.
I would pay the performance on top of that.
I suppose you could, you know.
That's what Mary.
You could, yeah, you could. Or you just call out, you know, increases or whatever. Now, below that, there's another one. You'll see that Sharon and guys' wages are there. The start date is below for each one of them there. Shows their hourly rate. It shows their overtime rate, the forty-hour rate and their annual rate. Now, I use fifty-two weeks. I think actually it's fifty-two point one four if you extrapolate it. So, you know, and just bear with me, I did fifty-two, so you're actually a little underpaid there on your annual rate, but not by much. And then from that, I took point five all the way up to four percent, only because that's what I had room for. I suppose you could round to five. So you can see if the council doesn't want to do pay charts, that if you chose to do a increase anywhere between point five to four percent, you could also give a percentage increase and you can see what the annual impact is and what the real impact in wages for each one of those. So as an example, if you took the annual wage for Sharon, you could start her as an example at a grade ten, somewhere around step five or step six, based upon her years with the city. And then she could see where she's going to be for the, where she would top out at and so on and so forth. Obviously, you could start at any grade, salary grade you wanted to, at any step you wanted to and make it match, so.
Nice question real quick.
Sure.
So you started her, let's just, this is strictly an example, you started her at six, so next year she becomes a seven?
Tied to evaluations and so on and so forth.
Okay, so this is just.
Poor performance.
So that's, they know what's gonna happen if, if they're doing a good job.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I thought you were meaning, but I wanted to make sure.
I'm not, I'm not asking for any action tonight unless it's obviously known that what you wanna do, that you don't wanna tie it to a pay chart. And I don't think it would require anything, that you'd have to change the code. I think you'd probably do it with the personnel manual or the employee manual. Just make the change there, so I don't think it would take much to convert us over to pay grades. Most cities use pay grades. It's not uncommon at all, so. But anyway, you can kind of get an idea of where it is. I can send the Excel spreadsheet to you if you wanna tinker with it a little bit or see what it is or if you wanna think about it a little bit more. I can tell you that based upon what everybody has submitted on these reviews, there would be no, it's fours and fives. There would be no reason why they would, either employee wouldn't be eligible for an increase, so. You can kind of go from there and Steve's of the same mindset. He stopped on the house yesterday and discussed this.
Mine was four oh with him on the phone because I was kind of busy. And I didn't get time to get it turned in, unless I put it in the mailbox.
Well, I, I think last year, I had, I don't remember exactly how it went, but I believe me and Steve made the recommendation of a zero budget year that we didn't have increases, but I think we did end up doing increases anyway, so.
Two percent?
Yeah, I think we did a standard two and a half or two or something for cost of living. So it's one of those things where, I don't know how your employers work, but generally, you know, farmers can't, you know, we can't go by that. You know, because you guys get paid no matter what, you know, that works.
You know, I just, my own personal, I can tell you, is that, you know, everything around me goes up and then the corn markets, if you haven't looked at them and everything else is low. And when your wage doesn't go up, you're losing ground because of the cost of living and it'd be the same as anybody else that's employed. I mean, and it's, it makes it tougher not getting a slight raise. It doesn't have to be.
And we can do cost comparisons of city clerks and public works. I can tell you that if you're gonna run them around here and compare it to Cedar Rapids or Marion or even Hiawatha, you're underpaid.
Yeah.
But you can't, you can't do that.
Right.
Like, like I can't prepare my wage to do one. You can't. You have to compare it to like this.
So we'd have to look at equal size and go from there, but. So anyway, that's out there.
This is good stuff.
Yeah, it's at the pleasure of the council. Like I say, don't necessarily need action on it, but there's the information. And is that okay that we do reviews on Monday, finish those up? They're, they're pretty well done, but just finalize the paperwork. Will that work for you folks? That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the bond closing certificate approved.
Closing certificate we got from Darcy and Whitney yesterday and it's just saying that we're, bond proceeds have been sold. Bonds have been sold and we've got the money and we've been spending it, so pretty right.
So what do we, I make a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, mayor.
Yep.
Okay. Bond closing certificate approval.
Woods made a motion to approve it. Do we have a second?
I second.
Ryan second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we'll move to public carrying on budget amendment for May thirtieth.
What time are we doing that?
Well, I think that's gonna change. Because Janon was here and we did our budget amendment and we've got, and we've raised our budget by nine hundred and, nine hundred and one thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. That was our seven hundred thousand dollar bill bond, our transfers of monies and such. And we raised our expenses by four hundred and forty thousand three hundred and forty-five because we took just a portion of the street project because most of it was in July. We didn't do enough because I did, paid bills today and. We didn't do enough, because I did paid bills today and unless Borst has a pay app for twenty thousand next month, we don't have enough. So we're gonna have to, I've talked to Ted Nelson at Department of Management today because we're supposed to have bond amendments done and to the auditor by the thirty-first and he says, republish with the correct amount, do a June hearing and an adoption in June. So we'll have a hearing in June. Which, do we wanna do it like next council meeting, June?
We could. It'll work perfectly.
Got a question, is it gonna be an issue on pain?
No, that's why I'm doing this.
No, I'm saying though, what if they submit?
They won't submit till the next council.
Till next council, so does we have to have the money?
We got the money, it's just you need.
We need to approve it, okay, I was saying, well wait.
If we approve the budget, it's gonna raise the dollar amount we consider.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
And the checks aren't written till the day after the council meeting, so.
I was just making sure that we weren't.
That's what I wanted to make sure of too.
So we'll, we'll set it for the next council meeting.
Next council meeting. It's early, just eight, yeah, it's early.
Anything, have you got anything else, or is it, make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion been made, you have a second?
Ouch.
Have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.